I think the worst drive I ever had in all the years I've been up here. I went to a school meeting when we were trying to save it in Frazier one time. Snowing like a son of a gun and everybody that was there. At the meetings from from there weren't that many for anybody, but there were seven. And but we heard Randy and it was snowing so hard and everybody decided to get a room and stay in great in whatever. Except myself and one more gal. And she said, well, I don't mind. I I need to drive home because I've got my other. So is Lisa Simpson. And so the two of us drove back from the worst snowstorm I've ever seen. And I kept honking my horn at her because I knew she was driving off the road.
Yeah, we made it. I I followed my. Number thirty, number thirty day. As we only know of thirty nine when we do drive in. It's like we got no one. But our time about that day. We only knew we're thirty. Thirty, thirty, yeah. The previous ten, it didn't snow. Thirty, thirty, you might tell me now. Then. Then. Oh, see, I think thirty, thirty, you couldn't see it was just the. Those downs came back, but so they invited out. I see. There's a problem. Look, ladies, oh, no, okay, we didn't know anything about.
And I drove back from the inn. Well, what the reading.
I'll just send you those numbers. Okay. Yeah. It's like a ninety five second.
I'm from and started.
We're on the bottom of. And thirty eight, I just.
And said, I'm not, those who don't need to go, you're very fast tonight. And I say, yes, I do this. I have to get home.
Yeah, so.
And he says, yes.
Oh, did she? All this for these others.
And I said, you're telling me I can't go.
It's great, thank you.
And he said, no. So I'm telling you.
And where were you?
And I said, I bottomed birth at Dallas. He said, you're not now, maybe I asked him when to do. And I sit there in the car for a while and I said. Will it get better if I wait an hour or so? And finally, he said, oh, he said, dead gum women anyway. I'm going over following. So I'm already done. Those were my two worst trips.
Send them to you. Great. Now you have the captains. Thank you.
You ready? Commissioner French is.
Not here.
For jury. He sent a note last week.
Yeah.
That he would be absent. I haven't heard anything from Commissioner. Has anyone else?
Great.
Nobody else?
Call the meeting to order. Our call indicates all or Commissioner Finch. He has an excuse absence. I have a motion to excuse his absence.
So.
What's second?
Both second.
All those in favor?
Hi. Was that for?
For personal.
Personal, okay.
And Christina Perkwas. You did not hear from, so that is considered an unexcused absence.
Number two.
Number two. All right, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from last meeting.
I didn't mention.
It says consideration. Unscheduled citizen participation, is there anyone in the audience here to discuss something not on the agenda? If you can just state your name and address for the record.
Donna Ready, eleven thirty three Grand Avenue. I love the Christmas lights. I know you have a contract to have the guy take them down and put it back up next year. But if you could just leave them up, that would be so awesome. Oh, really? Yeah, yeah, because especially the white ones, but even the colored ones on Will's tree at the end of town. Those lasted like ten or twelve years. And they were colored ones and he never took them down. So we know that they'll last. So I'd say just don't worry about it and leave them up because it's awesome and people love it. Okay, so but what I'm really here to say for two minutes is the affordable housing question. So I'm not going to talk about what you're going to discuss later tonight. But we have the solution for you. It's already built, it's fully furnished, two million nine fifty, so it's like a third the cost of what you'd spend at another location. You can move in in October, maybe earlier. It sleeps fifty six dormitory tot dormitory style with fifteen rooms each with private baths. Employees can walk to work in any kind of weather. They don't have to cross the highway, walk into town a mile to get to where they're working. And they can share the living dining kitchen.
So and guess what? The town will promptly along the way with the list removed. For a third because you'd be beginning to build something new in a less desirable location. And it's ready, no surprises. No building costs.
All right, thank you.
Can I move in?
For two point nine.
Which one of those rooms were the ones that that television guy redid? Number six, yeah.
All right, any other public comments? If not, is there any conflicts of interest and item of business tonight?
No, sir.
Yeah. So move on to items of business quasi judicial public hearing for the David Haven Plan Development Amendment number three. And we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing.
It was already open.
Now.
From last time, right?
And we'll open it again.
Make no.
Still open. Well. Let's see. In general, so the town received a request for the amended final plat and development plan for the David Haven cottages plan development. The request proposed to subdivide the property to allow the addition of parcel five that's in the southeast corner. And for the future to construct a new residence in on that parcel. So. The applicant is here today. We do have a copy of the third amendment plat attached to the packet. The in order to re plat and to do anything to their. Their parcel because it's a plan development, they have to get approval from everybody. On that whole parcel per our code, every lien holder, every person that owns anything from that, it has to get approved the entire parcel. Even though it's not changing anything within their HOA with all those little cabins. They just have to have the approval because it messes with their PD, they had to reset PD. So we went through the PD process with Carrie with the applicant and her surveyor. And it was a, there was a huge list that she might have seen and that is under required information on the fourth page of these. Document. And. All of the items have been received to this point except for four of the lien holders. That are cabin lien holders. All of the owners have said yes, but their mortgages also have to because the property description is now changed because the lot line has changed. So they're giving their approval to basically still continue that mortgage with this new description saying, yes. This is the new description and yes, we still want to give you the mortgage for this, basically is.
For.
It's just for. Lot. And so she has sent. Right, yeah, and she sent certified letters. She wasn't aware of the other two, so she's going to send us tomorrow. And we're waiting for them to come back. So technically, the application is incomplete. However, everything that was requested for the description, well, if you want me to read the two pages worth of items on page four and five, if I can go through them. Those have all been received, they've all been indicated on the plat currently. You can. Go over this and and see if there's anything you want added or you can allow it how it is. And say, on the condition that she gets these two, these four answers back from the lien holders prior to presenting it to the board. If you want that, that would be my suggestion, if you wanted to move this forward. But but yes, every, everything is on there, all of general common elements, all of the neighboring properties, the. Sewer is described. Yeah, so everything from those two pages unless you want me to read them. You'll agree if you do.
I thought there was was a an encroaching agreement for the.
Oh, yeah. So then there's that. So so that's, that's the plat part. So with the plat, they have rewritten the declarations to. To talk about the change, the additional parcel, and they've also added the. Mutual easement agreement and maintenance agreement, they have updated that to. Originally, it was just between two parcels, now it's written between the three parcels and it's their maintenance agreement among themselves on how to maintain the road. That has been updated and is attached and is noted on the plat as a reference to the document. And they have the old encroachment agreement for the building, which is like a foot over the line. They have that noted on the plat in reference to that resolution from two thousand and one where that was allowed. The trash, however, had been denied back in the day and that's what's in packet is the denial of that encroachment. It was never removed, I guess, and it's always just been there on in the, and Carrie can speak to this in a minute. But there is a concrete pad and there's a trash dumpster and I believe it's a grease bin next to it. And those have been there and they're asking if that encroachment can stay. If you want it to stay, it's been there. I don't know that it's caused any issues with with anyone, but I haven't heard any negative feedback from it. If you want it to stay, we can include it on this plat as part of the encroachment as part of passing this replat. That's that question. If you don't, then we don't, they don't. It just won't be allowed and they would have to remove it before they sell. And then as far as the zoning of the fifth parcel, we made sure to put that as underlying zoning of the resort district that a condition of twenty eight feet. And a condition of only one single family home density. And then the ten feet setback from Karen's Avenue and no. The the driveway. For our code now, even they can't have an additional driveway on Karen's, it must be an inner driveway on one of the alleyway or the other road. When they decide, when they come forward with their plans in the future. So that was indicated on there as your request from last time as well. And let's see, the signature blocks on the plat are the HOA president who has a. Document that states that they can sign for all of the owners and they've all said that they're okay with it. So he's allowed to sign for them. So there's only one signature block for the whole HOA instead of twelve signature blocks for each one of the owners. We have a document in the. In the packet that shows all of their signatures and. But. And the other two signature blocks, obviously, the planning commission and the board of trustees. There's a note, general note that there's, this is the final plan for the David Haven. Number three, but it's it's a replat and it's a subdivision plat combined. So that it's not, it's not confusion in the future. So people know that it was a subdivision because they've subdivided off parcel five and it's a replat. Replay. To do this because it's a TV.
All right, any questions, Kim? Now, open up the public hearing for any comments from anyone in the audience? You can state your name and address for the record.
Tom Wyder, eight eleven Palacqua. We live directly behind David Haven. We we've had to, we've lived there for over thirty years and we've had to put up with all the stuff that. Is that David Haven that they have not complied with for all these thirty years? Main items is that I strongly would urge the town not to allow the trash encroachment on the cards. It's a real problem when they were in operation. It had to be cleaned up pretty much every day. They do not abide by their own HOA rules for the snow storage. In fact, the piece that they want to use for the proposed future residential site was originally planned for snow storage. It has never been snow storage. Right now, it's basically a storage of construction stuff. That whole fence that is with the plastic on the top was supposed to be a temporary fence that's been there for over ten years. Part of that is the HOA rules. Part of that is the town enforcement, so there's some responsibility goes to both parties on there. But since the barns is or the. Controlling interest in the HOA. We talk about the alleyway being an emergency exit, which I have no problems with that. However, it is a constant exit. It is an additional driveway. And sometimes it gets so bad that I can tell you from personal experience, one of their customers sites wiped, they T-boned our car. So if it's going to be an emergency exit, I I understand that and I agree with that. But it's not being used as an emergency exit, it's being used as an additional thoroughfare. The snow storage, they have never complied with snow storage. This is the first year where they've actually started to put snow on there. However, this morning, whoever was operating the Bobcat was taking the snow and pushing it across Marina over into the to the pasture side. I know that that's the town rules do not. You're not supposed to do that, but the town is very lax on doing that. Quite honestly, I'm tired of the the David Haven looks very nice. It's kind of like a Western movie set front, looks very good from Marina. But on the backside, which is the side that that we look at. It's. We have everything from literally a movie prop from Speed Two, which was the ski do or sea do things. That have been sitting there, they move them around periodically to Uncle Eddie's Winnebago. With a blue tarp over it because the windows don't work to the. To the truck that rolled on Berthet that's been there for, I don't know, three, five years, I don't know. All the area that they have that's. In the. Area that they want to be for the new res is a junk pile. So if we're going to allow that, so the bigger question is what is going to happen? We, will the town continue to allow them to use that as? Open storage. Now, pretty much a lot of this is dependent upon the HOA, I get that. It's just that quite honestly, we're, we're kind of tired of it. They talked about, well, we'll help. Defer the costs on David Haven Drive and the emergency exit. Well, the thirty years that we've been there, they have never contributed with any of the Jason property owners, which would be ourselves and the points. On maintaining or upgrading the alleyway. So I'm very hesitant as to the. What will actually transpire, so we're we're opposed to. This amendment, which is what amendment four or five, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone online?
Just Karen.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and. Yeah, and that's not part of the. Public hearing, but yes. But if you'd like to come on up. Tell us about the project.
Carrie Barnes, six oh four Marina Drive. Um, I would like to address some of Tom's concerns. Tom rightfully does have some some legitimate complaints there. We have a lot of extra vehicles, we have. Actually, since the past couple of years, it's been cleaned up quite a bit more than than what he realizes, but it has over the years, I will not deny. It has not always been pretty and a beautiful sight at certain times of the year, and I will agree with him. As far as the the trash dumpster, I would say Tom, nobody cleaned up trash more than we did. So prior to us being able to get a bear proof top dumpster. For quite a few years, there was a morning, every morning Greg or I were out there picking up trash because of the the bear. And that was like, I would say in the past two years, that's rarely been an episode for us. We were able to finally acquire a lid that we can actually keep that is bear proof. Years ago, when we did go for the encroachment for the trash dumpster, at that time, the board had told us that we needed to. Pour a cement pad and then return. Well, we poured the cement pad and then we never returned. So that is the situation and probably why the dumpster's been there in the same place for probably fifteen years or more and. But it's been in that place, it's easy access for the trash company. The new owners do plan to run a restaurant or resort or B and B or a small event center or something like that. Then they would still, it would, I know that the trash company would appreciate being able to get in and out of there because it's very hard for them to maneuver their trucks otherwise. On the property. So if we could have that approved, that would be great for us and for the future owners. I did want to. To let Tom know that as far as the the E grade coming in and out of the alleyway. I don't know that it's totally an emergency exit on the. Plans.
From last, say, public, public alley that was dedicated to the public back when, not arena. Yeah.
Yeah.
The exit was. An emergency exit as well, it wasn't just. It it's an exit for parcel three, four is what it said on the original plan. But if there was a personal five, it would be an exit for all parties.
Right.
It's also an emergency exit so that emergency vehicles can access that side according to the fire.
And I did, I just wanted to clear, to clarify that and I'm sorry that somebody sites wiped your car.
Says the alleyway is public.
Yes.
On the plat that you were proposing right now. Is as is given later as an emergency exit.
That's because on the previous plat, before that, they asked them to dedicate an emergency vehicle.
Yes.
Exit so that emergency vehicles could access from that side.
But it's not, but I, it's my understanding, it's not solely an emergency exit.
It's also. It's emergency exit and so that the. It's still designated emergency exit, but it's also an Egress for three for the HOA in four and five or three and five.
Okay.
Is there next to it?
Yeah, we can, we can come back to that.
Okay.
We want to let.
Um, the other, the other thing is I just want, first, I I needed to make a, just a correction on on those. One of these is seven thirty three. And so what we're looking for are three more. Letters versus four more letters to lien holders, two I was not aware of, one, one I was. And then the the other thing is in the plan development, I just wanted to. Confirmed that lodging, B and B, restaurant, single family home, small event, event center, all that stuff is there so that the. Okay, that, so that is in there. All right. And then I think in the final thing. Georgia, I believe, I don't know if she got you the latest up, the latest copy of the updated declaration prior to this or not.
She didn't.
Okay.
That's what's.
Okay, I just, I didn't see it myself, so. Um, so this is, this is what we would like. We hope to be able to sell to these buyers, they seem like very nice people, they're a young couple, they just had a baby. Their intent is to run it more like a B and B, bed and breakfast is our understanding. With that said, to Tom and Kathy, we should be selling off and removing a bunch of. Our personal items from the property.
How long should we maintain that? I mean, because that.
Oh, that's a, sorry, that's a discussion you guys can have separated.
Perfect, so I was just stating that, that that that's our intent is to sell up and. And get things cleaned up quite a bit, and I do think that things have been cleaned up quite a bit, that they just haven't taken notice of that, so.
Okay. Is there any questions for the, for the applicant?
So my, my question is, or my request is that the town go ahead and, or the the board. Go ahead and approve our plan development as we have met all the requirements and. As Kim stated, being subject to the letters coming in from the lien holders. That we should be able to provide within the the time period that you gave us. So and also a couple of minutes of thanks. When I saw with all this entails with Kim and Tom and everything, this was hours and hours and hours of work. And I just wanted to thank you because it was a lot of time. I wanted to thank Tom, the title company, Mountain Lakes Properties and their staff. I mean, everybody worked really, really hard as this was a lot of information to compile. I was quite amazed at what it takes to do something that seems so simple. So I want to thank all of you for your time and. So I want to thank all of you for your time and uh, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any question?
Yeah, um, sorry, Carrie.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well.
We just have a couple of questions.
Is there any update of um location uh for the trash container that sounds like?
Um, it would be difficult for the trash truck more. I could get with the trash company and see if we could find something that would work. But for them to get in and out and be able to dump, it's just, it's difficult.
Yeah, it's uh, it's from people when they have uh some trash containers, they, you know, build something around sort of.
And that could be, that we would not be opposed.
Doesn't look uh too offensive.
I think that that's um, that would be that definitely doable.
And uh, and I did uh the uh sensing that goes along over there and
Oh, it's just a, it's just a cloth.
That's fine.
Thing, yeah, we can remove that. It's not.
That's good. Yeah, and I suppose uh, oh, some of the other things that uh Mr. Wyder mentioned, uh, it sounds like uh you acknowledged some of the issues and you're working on.
Right, well, um, several of the items that he has just described are, aren't on the property, they haven't been on there since fall. Um, so, and some were removed even a year or two prior to um his description. But uh, we do have a lot of vehicles, they are parked along the space and um we did a very good job in cleaning up the whole property this past fall and getting rid of quite a few of that, those items.
All right, any other questions?
Um, I had a question about your parcel five. Right now it's uh designated as snow storage. When you build your home, uh, will there be sufficient snow storage?
Yes, yes.
Is that snow storage for all of the association?
No, our home is totally separate than the association. Parcel five is totally separate from the association. The association has their own stone storage.
The snow storage amounts are listed on parcel three, four, and five on the chart on the second third page. Page three. On the top right.
It appears, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Yeah, that was my question.
Okay.
I, I'm looking for the snow storage thing, cause that's
Yeah, that, that was my main concern as well, because it looks like the snow storage um area dedicate, dedicated snow storage area for the lodge uh removes some of the parking spaces. Is that still going to leave adequate parking for, depends on what they want to do. They have not submitted to me what they want to do. They might be buying some parking spaces depending on what they want to do.
So all the snow storage that's shown on parcel five in the one corner and then all the way along the alley is just for parcel five or that's
That's parcel five.
That's all parcel.
And part of the HOA, the HOA has plenty of snow storage, plenty of open space.
That snow storage doesn't go away when you build the houses out here, as you
Well, yeah, I mean, it's not, I guess, just on the plat, there's way more snow storage than what parcel fives ever don't need officially.
Right.
Single family home, so I, I didn't know if that was also dedicated for all the roads that are going through there.
Um, in the old notes I found from Bernie, he said that because the alley is there that he wanted to see the snow storage on his south on the north边of the alley. Because of the alley.
Dedicated to the town, the snow storage area?
No.
No, it's not, but that's just what Bernie asked in one of the old meeting notes that I keep across.
Okay.
Which there are many of.
Um, well, I want to go back on the trash thing, and you said you could talk with the trash company, but looking at the plat behind the lodge there, there is a, you know, parking area that, and that is an access area and seems like there would be adequate room for the trash company.
It has to do with the wires, um, the utility wires and how low the utility wires are because they go directly into the, from the pole directly into the lodge building. I know kind of where you're speaking of, but I, I would say that if I can bring uh waste management out and we can, we can take a look at an alternative.
Seems like that would be preferred. To me.
You can also um postpone the encroachment, you don't have to do it at the same time, bring it separately as well. Until they discuss it with the trash company, we can separate on this.
Uh, going back to trash. Um, I, I'm not sure I understood your statement when you said that when we originally required, denied the encroachment for the trash and you poured another pad.
No, there was not a pad there. We were requested to pour a pad.
But you did not.
We did, but then we never came back to get a, to, to finish out the encroachment.
It was approved at one time, but just never
Yeah.
finalized, right?
Right.
Is that what I read?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, seems like that might have great, solved a lot of problems that we've done then. Um. The um, Kim, the grading and vegetation is not showing on the plat?
It's not shown on the plat, no, and should it be, is it required? It is technically required to our code, but we do have um this year's GIS, so we can pick that and use that. The grading is um not being changed, so it isn't shown. They're not building anything, not taking anything or putting a new drainage, so that's why it wasn't um required.
Okay, vegetation, does that mean the replacement of vegetation or new vegetation or is that just
Six says.
Showing what's there.
It's just showing what's there.
Okay. I guess one of my questions would be also um, were approving a side setback of ten feet?
No, that was already on there. It wasn't approved. There, there's a zero setback with resort and in the previous amendments, appreciates um planned, they requested ten feet from Karen's because they didn't want anything closer to Karen's right on, right on the road. So that was already in there, it's just being restated, so if they try to build a home, but it's very clear that they have to be at this ten feet setback from Karen's.
Okay, I, I just find it puzzling how we could, could say that this is the setback when we don't know what is going to be the front of this proposed new residence.
It's zero or it would have been zero at all, like
On all four sides?
For resort, it's on the front side, it's zero.
Right, probably ten on the side, I'm guessing.
But because this is now going to be a residence, it's not going to be rezoned.
Resort allows for
It's, it's, it's rezoned, it's, it's a planned development, so you set the zone how you want it and how it was prior to this was ten feet, so we left it at ten feet. And so, I mean, commercial transition was five feet off the front for a single family regardless of same family or not. It's not twenty five foot setback like in a residential.
Okay, I was under the impression that we'd be changing the zoning on this person at some point in time.
So what?
That's for the residential.
No, it's just a, the whole, the whole three, four, and five is all just one plan development. Once, ten feet of the Karen's was
That's what the plan development is doing, is setting the zone for it. So I had a question, at one time, I know Steph had brought up um, concerns about having another driveway up of Karen's. So shouldn't the plan development address that then if you don't want to see a driveway, another driveway cut there, that it be addressed as part of the plan development?
We can put that as a note separately. In addition to that, it's um in our code that the major roads in our town aren't supposed to have um driveways. It's supposed to go through an alley or it's supposed to be a side road. Um, that's that portal doesn't, isn't supposed to have new driveways or some people overlook that, so if you want it to be safer, we can put that in to make sure it doesn't
It just seems like clar- clarifying as much as we can now.
Yeah, we can.
Fix the guesswork out.
Sure.
To answer your, your question, Judy, the front setback in the resort is zero, um, side is ten, rear is ten, so they're actually having a larger setback than what the resort district would require.
Okay.
I always, I always hate to say, okay, this is your residence, and so now we're going to set this and then they turn everything around and then it's on.
Right. Was there any other questions for Carrie? All right, if not, we'll go ahead and close public hearing and turn it no, we only have the one, the one public hearing. Uh, so we'll go ahead and close it and turn it over to the commissioners for discussion.
I, I just have one question. John, um, did you want me to uh go ahead and pursue uh the uh trash company and uh building, building something around that?
I think
Um, to get information?
I think that's a discussion we're gonna have as a
Oh, okay.
And make a recommendation to the council as then.
Okay, all right, okay. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Lot of work.
A whole lot.
So uh, turn it over to commission.
Well, it seems to me, and I, I, well, you know, they have the, the trash trucks. I'm not sure the, the elevation is not much more than regular delivery, but the height of it.
But it lifts the dumpster up.
Well. But if that's in the back, then that, that doesn't go much higher. And I don't know if it would go underneath that wire, I don't know what the elevation height that wires is at, but.
It comes into the building, it's not that high. And if it comes into the top of the lodge, then that's not that high if you're lifting the dumpster.
Right.
Yeah, I have a picture of, like a recent picture of the dumpster, but it doesn't show the parking angle, I'm sorry, but it's on page fifteen.
I can't see it if there's electric lines running there.
Well, being right on Karen's air, the, it does appear to be a
Yeah, I, I think if it can get moved somewhere else would be better than sitting right there. There's power lines on Karen's, but you know, there's no power lines internal, is there, that are above ground? So if it went internal. Yeah. I guess that's my, that was my question is, we can't answer, we can invite, yeah, they have a backup.
Are there internal power lines, is that interesting?
Yeah, like I see the power lines that go along
Above.
Above the lodge, now I see anything can get underneath those. Is there actual power lines in the lot, around the lodge that would prohibit the truck from going where John had mentioned?
Um, there are lines over the driveway there.
Right, and that's it, it looks like. Versus the two thousand seventy four.
And where it has been tall enough, then it appears it didn't stay.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the parcel viewer it looks like however it goes to be um laundry building.
I think anytime we can get encroachments off of the right away, it's a good thing. Anytime we can try to screen a dumpster um in town is a good thing, so.
What's it?
I said anytime we can get something off of a right away is probably a good thing.
Yeah.
And then if you can't, then I'd say at a minimum, it, it definitely should be screened to Tommy.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it could be um up to the new owners to figure out where they can put the trash, like you could have it known to them.
That if we don't
When they
If we don't attach to the strap, then maybe they have to start all over, but correctly, right?
The trash, um down, I guess, and we don't
Well, they either are gonna have to
Cause they have to show
Secure the encroachment uh agreement to keep it there or uh relocate, relocate it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, which would be the might be the preferred.
Yeah, if they don't keep the restaurant, for instance, then they would probably need the grease the big black one next to the dumpster. Right, they would just want a dumpster.
Possibly, but we don't know.
Yeah, you don't know what they're gonna do.
Does the town require screening of dumpsters now?
They do.
So is that like a
Had it, we had it on books at one time, and then because of the downturn in the economy and the, you know, I think they had a business cycle, we, I think we set it off early.
And such a fair way.
I guess, is that a requirement that we should make, even if the dumpster gets moved off of the public right away, but still sits there along the road, is that a requirement that could be added into the plan development?
That it's screened?
Yeah.
Yeah.
From the public view.
Well, I think there are a couple of things that, that we and Carrie agree that maybe could be taken care of. I think there's always the question that we got into a number of other things about whether it says that it shall be done or it will be done, it might be. So I think we need to make clear what, what needs to be done so everybody knows what we're getting into.
Agreed. Thoughts from the commissioners? The other issue, the driveway, it sounds like there's already regulations in the code that won't permit another driveway cut onto the road. You'll have to go through the alley or the private access easement.
Yeah, but we can add a note to make sure with the with the uh, like the height and the other restrictions for that.
Do the commissioners have any thoughts on that, concerns? Hearing none?
Well, when you get, when they put the plans for the development over there, you know, has some recommended access, I guess, right?
They have one, you know.
And that's up to the town to you know, approve it or not.
Yeah, that would be the name, so that they're going from.
I, I'm looking at the overlay, the, the green and the red, and they designated driveway onto the alley.
Yeah, the, the green. Previously, so yeah, they, we had them remove that in case that's not exactly where they wanted it, because then they'd have to replat again.
Okay.
So that's why it's not shown on here. But to say that it's not allowed on Karen's would be a good um point.
Okay. Okay, so then the only thing I guess left to discuss us, there's other items, is this trash? And what the recommendation will be from the commission?
In general, um, this is just for commercial.
So the maintenance building and the two and the shed, those are remaining. Those don't belong to the HOA, that will be loaned to parts apply.
Yeah, those don't belong to the HOA, the only thing that belongs to HOA is within that parcel free. That's why they moved the. Uh, line over, cause they wanted to give the shed and leave to the HOA. And give the building thirty-nine to the lodge. And I guess.
So you saw on the red and green print that it said, it does say emergency exit, exit on the.
Yeah, so I shouldn't have included that because that was the old pre, that was the plot that's overlaid before the surveyor. Didn't catch that.
So did he?
Before the surveyor changed everything and wrote on the plot.
So was he the one that wrote emergency exit or that was previous?
That was, that was two. Two amendments ago, and it was in, so it's on eighty NAST for one, right?
Yes.
So should, should an emergency access, and if, if it appears like people are using it as a regular.
Because there's signs inside that say exit this way, don't come this way. There are signs that are on.
So should it be set up with an actual like chain or something like that, so it's only used for emergency access, that's the case?
What they changed it to, uh, which is what is on page, this page, um, to page three. Of the actual plot is eighteen foot private access, so it's private for David Haven Lane users, people that live in David Haven. But so it's an access easement.
But does the town maintain that alley?
The town maintains the alley, oh, well, sorry, no, the town, it's a public, thank you.
It's a public right of way, but the town doesn't actually.
We don't make, no, I talked to public works and I said they do not, they don't allow it.
So I can certainly understand the concerns and that, oh, oh, and, and you look at the aerial and it's, it's very evident that there's a lot of traffic coming in and out of that, just based on the road.
Right, because there's signs inside saying exit this way, it doesn't say emergency exit inside.
So then should we address that as part of this plan development as well, to bring it back to what it's supposed to be, which was an emergency access, and it should probably have? Some sort of a control.
As long as people can exit, yes, as long as there's exits for, as long as there is access to enter and exit from each parcel, it should not matter.
What they need is a piece of material to cross the property. Five is part of this, it's why I'm at on.
Yeah, so that's why it's emergency exit, that's why it's written on there too. So how they have it written right now, it's eighteen foot private access easement with the maintenance agreement that everybody's agreed upon, all, all of those. And it's also the emergency exit.
Right. And I'm fine with that, it's just once you get to the alley, then it's no, it's a public, it's a public alley that doesn't have public maintenance, so then it's on the two homeowners at the end to. Be responsible for all the traffic coming up the avenue.
So do the owners of the alley have an agreement with the town?
No.
To maintain it?
Our own property, the whole alley.
Why has there never been an agreement with the other owners that use it?
They're not here. They don't live here, some people, but when, when we first, first time we made chip and seal. Us and the boys, they did a chip and seal, they even chose not to add to that. And help us on that, although it was an exit from their building onto the alley, so we maintain, we pay for it, we maintain it.
There's a few places in town that are like that, that aren't maintained by the town. Like the one behind Gateway, for instance, and they. Also have the same questions for the people that are going to build above them, whether they're not gonna help them or not fix the road or take care of the road. It is, it's, it's, it's flooded as a public right of way, but it's not maintained by the town. If, if any one of the owners want it maintained by the town, they have to bring it to town standards. And they have to ask the town after, well, before, after, I would, I would do it before, ask the town if they would maintain it, if they brought it to town standards. If they have enough employees to maintain them and are able to stand to maintain that.
Which already did, told us he was like, we paid for the upgrade to the street. It was starting to degrade before already that he was going to redo it, because it was becoming very lucky, but it never happened, and then. Two of the first people later. Nothing has happened, but it's very degraded now at this point, but they paid for it once.
There's a lot of. Places in town where they, uh, you know, have their properties, but they have an alleyway and. And then, there's a lot of places that they have access from either the front or the back.
What are you, what are you saying? Commercial transitional is only, they're supposed to enter from the alley, they're not supposed to enter from the front. That wasn't always apparently enforced, enforced, so a few places got filled where they don't have an alley access, or they should have. But, um, anyway, it depends on what zone you're in.
So I think the question just says, do we, do you restore it back to what it, its original purpose was, which was? Emergency access, because there's a lot more traffic on that road than, or in that development than maybe what the alley was intended for. I, I guess, appear from other commissioners, their thoughts.
Well, it just seems that there's gonna be that much traffic coming out of David Haven, that they should just pay the. Restructure of the road, if that needs to be done, so that the channel moving.
I don't know if the town would make a ten foot alley, though. I don't know what our, I'm saying, I don't know what our alleys are elsewhere.
They have, in some places they do.
They can get down there with the grader, it's down the alley.
Where the grader?
The vast majority of the cars. Uh, uh, don't use the alley way, that's right.
No, they don't do that. And they.
They are quite extensive.
I would just thank you, the current.
I, I guess, yeah, I mean, certainly.
Oh, I don't know protocol.
I mean, I guess, yeah, we're still in discussion.
Oh, okay, um, no, I, it, my understanding that the, the alley was never emergency exit only from the beginning, because it was always a public. A public easement right there, it was never just originally designated as emergency only. It was just put on there because we needed to state on our plan development where an emergency exit would be. In case of emergency, and so that is why the emergency exit is on there. Is my understanding from day one.
That's my understanding.
Okay, all right, I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
And, and for plan development. There can be several. Uh, egress.
There can be, yeah, I don't, I haven't come across. In our checklist, that it says designate an emergency exit. So that's not, it, it either got removed since this was first asked for, or. It was something that a commissioner just asked for during one of the meetings, what it, what it seemed like from the minutes I read, so somebody asked them to designate one. That's what it appeared to be, so we kept it because we kept. Everything that was on the plan as it was, and then kind of rewrote it, if it didn't need change, but if we need to change it, we. Can change it and remove the word emergency exit. And it's, would still be an eighteen foot private access easement with their maintenance agreement.
So if it's going to be. Went back to an emergency exit, should there be a, for example, a chain? Where the fire department has a key to, so that it cannot be used for anything except.
I think it would get, not an emergency exit, right, it would just be a possible exit.
That's what, yeah, that's what we're.
Yeah.
Now, yeah, that's the question, should it?
Because you have a private citizen or two, i- in some cases, taking care of an emergency exit for an adjoining property.
Right.
On a ten mile.
Right.
That doesn't make sense to me.
Like, so, we were never even asked to help maintain that to begin with, and we're really happy to do that. But we, but we would be more than happy to, uh, to do that, the, the other good thing is. To pay for all the asphalt for him to get into his home.
I don't know how you resolve, but the alleyway for. Other residences, it's very little use, without maybe two cars going to work, coming back from work. That's finally the extent for household, that's the extent of the traffic. Through a normal residential neighborhood.
Something.
What's happening is that half of the alleyway is being used for commercial purposes. And, and during their peak summer, that's used, it's, it's heavily used, so is it? I don't know, as part of the game, is it, is it just a private alleyway for just residences? Or is it a commercial part?
Or is it a public?
Guess the point, that was right.
But is it an alley?
All right, thank you, thank, thank you both, um, so I think that's. Well, it, it's, it definitely is a consideration that we should, we should take into account, I mean, it is. A ten foot alley, it's certainly not meant for heavy traffic.
Well, there are some places right across the street over here where their access is right on the alley.
I would also like to note that's not their only, they have a driveway on the main street to their offices.
Okay, so, sorry, so you just need to. We're gonna keep the discussion here at the commission level without beginning, sorry.
One other question, the, is, how long has that been used by the David Haven people? Uh, as, uh, you know, for egressing there.
Since nineteen thirty-eight. Since nineteen thirty-eight.
That's, that's a long time ago, and, uh. It, it has been used for such a length of time. I think it sets some kind of a, uh, you know, the time. Sets a precedence that allows it. But the volume change significantly. When they can, when they changed it to their condo, where they're selling a bit more units. Before it was, you know, the David Haven Lodge.
Oh, right, yeah.
Now, and being pre-stated on that, in part there is, you know, that when they convert it from the condos. There was a very increase of, use, and yes, the alleyway has always been used. But there's been a dramatic increase, it's.
We are not common. I'll do whatever the cabins.
And then nightly rentals, same as they were when.
They're privately owned.
Their nightly rentals being used exactly the same as they were when David Haven started, their nightly.
I'm just reading because I'm, you know.
Okay, so. I think we understand, we understand both of your, both of your positions, um. I think we, we have that and trash to, to work out before we can make a recommendation either way to the commission or to the council, so. To move things along, is there consensus on the alley access? Then.
I, I, I think it's, it's. Because it's gone on for so long, it's going to be hard to change it, but it's not fair to have. Private property owners maintaining a public right of way that other people are using, I think they need to all. Kitchen, or it needs to be, um, town maintained.
Yeah.
And we have many alleys in town that are narrow. And that are maintained by. And they're virtually used in residential use, but it shouldn't be up to the private property to maintain.
So how do you wanna craft that into a condition?
I think we need to perhaps have the input of the maintenance department, if we can have that come in and. Maybe you can give us guidance on what should be done. Certainly, I, I don't think it's up to a private citizen to maintain a ten row that you buy others.
Right. And to keep the, the town out of it, I mean, if you do simply use it as emergency access and gated, I mean, they still have two other accesses to publicly maintained roads, so.
And I think that's what should be done if, if.
The town doesn't take.
The town doesn't take what it makes.
Is there a way to craft that into a condition?
Well, I suppose.
That we, this is a.
Some of those people over there, they compensate for half of the crops.
Right, but we can't really get into private maintenance agreements at a town level here, so.
No, can we just make the condition that it becomes a chained off emergency outside, and we have several of those now.
If, if the town refuses to maintain it, then maybe that, that's the way to go, just ask that it be emergency only in the signage or a gate. To keep all the extra traffic off it.
Well, the town has certainly taken the action of taking over the maintenance summaries in town. That were built within the last ten years. That were supposedly HOA brands, and they think by the HOA, John.
What does, what does it take to get the town to agree to do something like that, like we'd have to have meetings, people come.
We should chat, I think we should.
There's specifications in our roadway standards in our municipal code, which is so many inches of so much subways and so much lumber and so wide. And also there has to be enough staff, and they have to know that they can take over.
So that can be simply a longer issue than this.
Yes.
I would put the condition in with this, that it becomes all in an emergency, so don't land that it's gated or chained or something, and make that our condition, and then if the. If everyone in this David Haven property and all those lots wants to then bring that to the town and say, we want to be able to use this, we want this to be now maintained, and. That becomes a separate issue.
Well, the simplest solution was, uh, you suggested is, uh. Hey, just put a chain across it, and, uh, they'll figure out their ins and outs. Without.
Well, there may have.
They use it.
There may have to be some sign changes if the signs say exit this way.
Yeah, it says, it just says.
Okay, then they would have to change.
So I think we have an agreement on that, so then trash, as far as the encroachment into the town's right of way.
I, I'd like to see if it would be possible to move the location of the dumpster, but it, it sounds like we have to find out if. Waste management can get in there because of utilities, because that little parking area that John pointed out would be great for that. It would, it would all, it would screen it a great deal from Cairns and, um, also be well off, off the street.
Do we have to know that, or could we just make that a condition, that trash needs to move out of the encroachment and we screened?
I think that's how you. I think that's how you bring that.
And then they figure out how to do it.
Right. Okay, so does somebody want to craft that motion? There, Kim had put one together for us on page six. That we would need to then change.
Yeah.
To address those two items.
Okay, so it would say. Planning Commission moves to have staff work with the attorney to draft a resolution to recommend. The David Haven Plan Development Third Amendment with the following conditions. One, that proof of lien holder consent is received by staff prior to the Board of Trustees hearing. Two, that applicant require, or two, the applicant. Move the trash off of the encroachment and screen it from public view. And three, the applicant create the emergency exit only and block it off from public use.
But it sounds good, it may have to, may have to go to the community. But basically, I would. I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I am.
All right, those opposed? Motion passed, it's five zero. All right, thank you.
Time period, I'm confused.
Uh, so ours is just a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, so they'll take that. Our recommendation into consideration, they would be the ones to set any time with frames or anything like that.
And they would be waiting for the lien holder consent to come in before they set the time, right, anything like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's the lien holder and then the board will. Make the decision on these. But on that, other than that, you've approved.
We have, we approve it and the board, the board can take our recommendations and talk them out the window or.
Well, I appreciate you guys and all your time and effort, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that was our own item of business, so. Next, we will move on to. Items for discussion, the twenty twenty Conference of Land Use Plan Item. Review.
Well, I have to admit that I haven't uh jumped in and and started the workout.
Did no one do their homework? Yeah.
I will admit, I did not do my homework, I briefed it over when I saw the packet and. I did not write down. My priorities.
All right.
So.
You've been always ahead of all of us, but.
Now, um.
We want to.
The assignment was to look at priority ones, is that correct? Because um.
Whichever priority you think.
Okay.
It would be preferable if it was priority, that'd be the highest priorities in the month. But if you don't think that any of the highest priorities are one of yours, then. That is for you to say, so.
Well, do we want to delay discussion of this to another meeting when we're? All much more prepared than we are.
Or just people that were prepared, want to give me their little list and I can start kind of putting some idea of what you want together. It'll be a shorter meeting later.
I I'd like to hear what Judy has to say because I looked at these and. They they all looked very frustrating, like you're gonna work on it and nothing's gonna get done, so I'd like to see her vision, so then maybe. That'll give me an idea of how to tackle some of this.
Think that would be good.
The one thing you will find is that my priorities differ greatly. From the way that they were. Presented in this book. And the reason that I say that is number one, I think that we all agree that probably. Workforce housing, affordable housing is priority number one. That's something that. I think board is and should continue working on and should move forward. Because I don't think that there's a lot that we could do. To uh since we're not being asked about. You know, what do you want to see of the family property here and things like that. Say, well, but many of this. But I think that. In my mind, right behind that priority. Would be. The number of loads or changed. Businesses. And how that's going to affect the the future financial security in this. I think we have a lot of empty buildings. I think we've had spaces that have turned into. Maybe things that we didn't want. We're taking things out of the income stream, tax stream for the town. That I know that David Haven has always been a major contributor to taxes, we have census taxes and so forth within the community. And now it may be a. Be indeed that has none. So I think the financial strength of our community is in question. I'm I'm here to be.
Well, if if they're private property owners, what can we do to encourage them to have particular businesses? Because you can't force them.
Well. That's true, but you can do things to encourage them. To do something. For example, now we have basically. One, one restaurant in town itself that's. Sometimes we have not. Free, what happens to our. Second homeowners that come up to enjoy our community and want to be coming to town for food service and so forth. You know. There are just things, the service station is no longer here. So what happens when your car gets started? What happens when you need a tire repaired? I think that we need to truly look at the financial basis of our community. And find out, okay, what are the things that we can do? So many of the things that we. Better question here. Mentioned things like childcare. When we need childcare, we don't have children. Is we have very little, so. Why are we looking at child's? We don't have any place to house them if they come in together.
So do you have priorities? Because like we have here a whole section on the healthy economy. Economic recovery, development, attainable housing. What you're talking about, do you have priorities on this list? That you think would meet what you're discussing? And one of the things under economic recovery is encourage the marketing and animation of any vacant storefronts using pop-ups and other shared retail concepts. Or create temporary parklets on Grand Avenue between Hancock and Vine. That have usable outdoor space and expand business capacity working within specified design guidelines. If you think any of those would help? Well, like the first one, encourage marketing and animation of vacant storefronts, um. True Penny Pit Stop had to go to forty different businesses, have them sign a petition, come in front of us to get a conditional use permit. Go in front of the board, um, that that seems excessive for just someone wanting to. To to put a small business on an unused piece of property, so it would reducing those regulations, though.
I think, I think that may be a place to start. My concern is. And and there have been people in the audience that have said, why don't you just throw out all of the regulations? Because everybody will do what's right.
No. Like, for instance, with the. For instance, with the. Penny is, we've been very anti. Food trucks, mobile businesses since I've been here, and so we do make it.
Well.
Way too difficult for something that should have been almost an administrative. Process.
I thought the same way even about. The penny was in that it was a short term concept. I always said that we turned that away, but it was a similar process, right? Where you have to talk to every person, we bet it in saying maybe that a long term. She didn't go, she didn't have to, got a requirement to go to forty businesses and get all their signatures. But she did, which was good to build before and be like, hey, I want to do this, is it okay? And I don't want to surprise you.
So, yeah.
That was just her trying to.
But going back to to the to the food trucks. The original concept there of not allowing them in town. Was because it took so much business away from our permanent. Bricks and mortar businesses that were open and supporting the community on a year round basis. But I don't have any, and.
Back then it was maybe an issue now.
Well, I think it's maybe changed some. But. It it's not going to help. Um, I forgot his name now, the Delaey down by three sisters, what is size now, size. If we can't encourage people to be here on a year round basis. I don't think we can encourage them anyways. I mean, look at what businesses do, like. How could we encourage them to be open year round? I think even if they had the clientele. They don't necessarily want to go to the tires, they want to take a break, you know, each other. Well, and and Kathy's laughing because we've had this discussion many times. I think that's true, I think the people that buy a lot of our businesses today. And for years in the past. Have been people who want to get out of the city. And they want to retire or they've been fired, so they come to the mountains to have. A business that they can have open three days a week and vacation hours. Well, let's not allow people to be fired.
I mean, in some ways, I think having more competition would actually be helpful.
It would.
I think that we we like to protect the brick and mortar businesses, but I don't think it's doing us a service, so then they can make those decisions, you know? But we can take off for three months, there's nobody else here and we'll still have our business when we get back. Well, what what are the problems with? With all these regulations, when when we first moved here full time, I contacted the town to ask about. Doing a food truck or something similar and no one at the town would call me back. So instead of saying, no, you know, we really don't encourage that, they just, they just ignored all my inquiries and it was during COVID, so I couldn't come here and talk to anyone in person.
Well, you know, I had that same experience, I had two individuals. Who are. Second homeowners in this community and have been building affordable housing. For years, that's thirty, forty years experience. And I sent them to Town Hall to talk about debt financing. So that they could do this similar thing here, they were ready to go. And the town said, well, we don't understand that, so go talk to somebody who does. Well, I'm sorry, we could have had. Affordable housing built already. Had the town itself, the administration. Been open to saying, well, we don't know what it is, but we'll look into it and and we'll see if we can make it work. So I agree with that. I think one of the things that is hurting us terribly is that. And I don't know, maybe Ken, Kim could tell me, I haven't been in Town Hall much lately. But. How many of our staff are back permanently in their offices working?
But I think we can. The question is these priorities, so even if you're talking about like attainable housing, we have priorities here in a number of them, one of them. You know, update chapter twelve, article two of the Town Plan Use Regulation, so less than restorations that created disincentive for the development of ADUs, which we've been talking about for.
We just did that.
Yeah.
So I can check it on.
Adopt criteria and funding priorities for the use of towns housing fund, development purchase land is named for workforce housing. For public private partnerships, so we have these pieces in, so I mean, are we saying that this? This whole healthy economy would be priority number one because it has a lot of this in here that's already.
Correct.
Been developed.
Well, and and my thought along that line was if you don't have people coming into Town Hall. For. To answer questions.
We're all here. Every day I walk around, I'm in my office.
To answer questions and make sure that they know. What's going on.
Everybody.
As you know, every community that you you read and and their experience with. The the all of this work from home stuff. Is that people no longer come downtown, they no longer eat in town, so we don't need restaurants. They no longer shop in town because they all are out of town with the exception of Kim and.
That's maybe a big downtown, but. Let's focus back to Grant.
Okay. I think there are. But and a lot of things we can't do anything about.
I think that's the thing, because we have this plan and our assignment is to look at what the priorities are. I feel like we should do that because otherwise it's incredibly frustrating to try and go back to the drawing board and recreate it and because this was all just created. Right, so I think our our question is how do we work within these priorities to identify what we think the priorities are? My personal priorities are all in the natural environment, so I am not even that concerned about them, but. Yeah, let's take all the empty servants and get rid of them and just rewild it and. Well, you know, like the attainable housing, um, it it shows here that Partners Dola, um.
These are suggested partners.
Okay, because like there's what Donna just brought up, I mean, why aren't we buying up all the um. All the hotels in town, I mean, the the Lone Eagle Lodge was for sale for a long time, the. The Black Bear Lodge out on the highway was for sale, this has been for sale for what, three years, four years? And instead of looking at something that's already built. And we could put people in right away, we're buying property. That is going to take significant money to develop.
Didn't she take this to the board meeting for her three months?
Well.
Because we don't have that kind of.
That's what I.
We don't buy things.
Yeah, or manage them.
And we don't manage them, we're not a management.
We get back to what it's doing to our business atmosphere in town.
And then you're taking away.
Another major business that pays taxes in town off of the tax bill.
Yeah.
The same thing happened when the uh when the theater bought the service station and the apartments across the street. It took that out of the realm of a money making facility in the city.
Yeah, that would be.
And they would all order Amazon packages all the time and so.
And so maybe, so maybe. Like other communities. So. I look at the big picture. Where does this start? You know, we have the, we have a wonderful plan and I thought it was wonderful plan when we passed it by this mayor. We passed this water uh plan. That every so many years we raise the water rates and so forth and so on down the line. But we didn't consider that that hurt our. Long term and short term housing. Population because who pays that increased water fee?
The renters.
The owner doesn't pay, the renters pay.
Well, same with property taxes.
Yeah, but what's it did was a hell of a lot better than what Grant did, which was all of a sudden just show up. Uh, the blue and say, hey, we're gonna double your rate.
That's what I said, but you know, we had, we had the the water department people come in and say. You know what, the economy is bad right now, people are struggling. We have sufficient funds to take care of what is needed for our facilities and so forth, let's not raise it this time. And boards said, no, we're not ready to do that. So that raise was passed along to the renters. You know, the, these are things that I think a lot of times people don't take into consideration unintended consequences. Of what we do.
Yeah. Know that that had that much to do with, this bunch of the short term rental had a lot to do with. Even where there's. Town, so.
We'll see.
It all adds up.
Well, as a person that had fifty units that they were managing.
So who will be in the areas of Mary Drive?
The reason that people quit renting long term was number one. They were having trouble to make a net rent. So they thought it was a way out, but secondly. Every time we had a long term renter that was in a unit for over. But secondly, every time we had a long term renter that was in a unit for over six months, the unit had to be completely remodeled. So the renters themselves hurt themselves. Yeah, but that's an investment, so we can't do anything about it. And this town would be totally broke if we didn't have short term rents right now. But you know, it's more than just that thing you need with affordable housing. We had an opportunity to buy and we started the opportunity to buy the condominium complex down across from the post office when it was going into foreclosure. There were eighteen brand new, just finished units that went into foreclosure. And we were negotiating on that building to buy it for less than a million dollars. And unfortunately, because of the red tape involved in government financing, we couldn't get our act together quick enough and individuals fingering the bucking. We couldn't say, solve our housing problem for ten years by buying those eighteen units.
So Judy, just so that I have this written down correctly, your priority is affordable housing or is your priority economic? What's your priority?
Economic recovery, economic development or attainable housing?
Economic development. Because if you don't have development, you don't have jobs for people to come in and sell.
Perfect, because here's your number one priority then. Create a strategic plan for diversifying the local employment base, increasing the retail mix and making other long term adjustments soon for economic resilience. How's that you're talking about?
That's pretty much it, but it's very good.
Yes.
And, and, and where do you start working? Are those broad things?
Well, that's what I'm starting to think. I get for asking. Was that under, which one? That was under economic development, the first time, the first time.
I think I would throw out at least, I think my, um, the number one priority would be under. Under economic development, it would be update. Oh, we necessarily need to have a historic district zoning or way longer than maybe. But to protect the downtown district the way that it goes now. Cause that's what's drawing everyone into this town. There will be a time when we're going to start seeing buildings here. Being raised and arrayed, raised.
I think it's raised.
Raised and new big structures coming in, so. Rust buckets. Yes, so I think that would be my, one of my priorities, because I think that's what's keeping a lot of people coming to visit Grand Lake as well. I said, we have a truly historic downtown. Wooden boardwalks and we're not just flashy and fancy like this. Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
So I think we made it. I think we made some progress in some of the COVID funds that were used to help redo the front storefronts and so.
Yeah.
I think that helped. But if it, if they're closed, it doesn't.
Right?
Okay.
Thank you.
That was one of the ideas. There's my number.
That was my diary. And by the way, you know, I made the same suggestion when the, uh, Park Avenue units were being built. Because at that time, there were some financial difficulties going on with those. I said, why doesn't the town go buy it? It wasn't a perfect answer. They were new, they were usable, they ready to move into, we could have done that. And unfortunately, sometimes we get slack and we don't, we don't have the execution. I also suggested it's one that aren't from the cream parts.
Well, I'm also economic development. I don't, um, I'm looking at update chapter twelve, article two of the town's land use regulations to reduce obstacles associated with attracting new businesses by streamlining development review and permitting procedures. For your run of the mill retail, it is very easy to start a business. So is this like for, well, you know, when we had the Williamses come up and and ask about a temporary use permit for the, um, buying mountain monteros? Is, is, is that talking about streamlining that type of thing? Because if you just want to open a retail space, it's really easy.
Especially if it's already built and has, has parking and that kind of stuff, it's usually not that difficult.
You mentioned, uh, uh, the housing and, uh, the Lone Eagle, so that's a happy, uh, came to the power and, and, you know, hey, you could convert those into, you know, little units and everything and. And I don't know what he was asking for, but.
He was, he was asking for us to recommend, um, getting, I think he wanted twenty thousand per unit to put in a kitchenette and he wanted the town to pay for it.
I know, I know what.
In the Lone Eagle Lodge. He was asking the town to fork over twenty thousand dollars per unit so that he could uh, put in kitchenettes in all of those rooms.
Okay. Well.
Well, we, we have had a similar situation like this in the past, although the town wasn't involved with the Wakana. Because that was a hotel motel, restaurant, bar, that kind of thing. Going pretty, pretty good. And they decided that because of the housing shortage, they would turn the units into long term rentals. Problem was renters never paid the rent. I mean, some of those people are giving five, ten thousand dollars in a back rent and couldn't pay it, wouldn't pay it. So that was a private business that did pretty much what this is, is recommended. But I, I, how do you take care of that? I don't know. It, it, it worked for a while until they got so you could get it, they couldn't get out of it. So we have to kind of look at the, at the population that we're serving. And, and how we make it profitable for them. I, I threw a fit in Mountain Market one day because there were tourists coming in and I happened to be behind them in line. And the tourist said, oh, well, uh, is there a service station downtown that we can buy gas? And the clerk said, oh, don't dare buy it here. It's too high. Go to Grand. Duder.
Except for during the pandemic when they didn't change it.
I don't know. That was just where I started. And I looked at so many things thinking, these would be great. But does it have long term sustainability that, uh? So I think a lot of it doesn't. Redo the, the.
Under a natural environment, open space and trails. Up the second one down says, update chapter twelve, article nine of the town's land use regulations to clarify the language in relation to the land dedication requirements for open space. Wonder how they would that clarify.
That's what I'm curious about too, but I think it would be interesting to look at that.
Look at it, see what you think needs clarified on.
Yeah. And then under view shed protection. Up the second one down, update chapter twelve, article two of the town's land use regulations to create a scenic overlay zoning district and associated supplemental regulations for view shed protection.
And number three, while you're at discouraging flat roofs.
I was like, oh, that's got transferred all over the ring.
Discouraging what? Yeah, I agree.
I would talk about dark sky.
I know. Dark skate. I mean, all of this is important, but I would have. And we've done a lot of the dark skies downtown, which just needs to do everybody else.
Yeah, I want to create a PSA and send it out with utility bills, which we don't do, you know?
Yes, yes.
But you know how you go through the other cities with your utility and so you'll get like TSA, you know, put your poo, dog poo, because there's a lot more water.
Right.
I want that one too. But like, consider changing your light fixtures outside your home to be not seen off the other property and point down. And. Right, I want to remind them that it is the code. They're not, they'll find you at first, but you should try it. Maybe we could buy some grants or something. You know how people will change their water heads.
Yeah, their low flow.
Low flow and they get up from the city sometimes.
Yep.
No, yeah, maybe we have dark sky ones, because I think there's grants out there.
Maybe like that, the theater kids go around when they're not performing, maybe doing that kind of stuff for people.
John, do you have any priorities that you want to?
Like the, you know, the open space and the trails and I, I think that, you know, that, oh geez, I forgot the date of it, but that draft, uh, parks, trails and open space master plan, I thought it was. Pretty good, but I, I think that that's a, uh, that would be a priority to, uh, you know, finalize that and have some action. And on that, and then the third one is, uh, you know, on the trail network, the net also, uh, addresses that draft parks, trails and open space. Master plan. So I think both of those are, uh, I would regard those as a.
Which ones are this? The first ones?
The first one and the second and the third one.
First and version, okay.
And, uh, it's kind of funny that the second one over there talks about, uh, you know, language in relation to land dedication requirement of open space. And I think we actually didn't, we, uh, rezone that, uh, Matthews Park property as an open space.
I'd give up two towns.
All right, well, I guess for sake of time, do we want to let Kim digest what we told her and then she can bring back the list? The pared down list, Mr.
Hi guys, thanks, bye.
Everything we talked about, I mean, you gotta think outside the box. There's so many different facets of it. Um, and there's still some very low hanging fruit that was available, but for whatever reason, the community, we've lost our volunteerism. We've lost a lot of just
caring.
Doing things.
We have. Completely different.
This one, you're talking, what happened to this motion? You know, there were the snow wheelers that, I don't know if you're familiar, but the four major manufacturers came, but there was four places, Red Lake, uh, Big Rivers up in Minnesota. Where the manufacturers would come and they would come this year to paint photographs of the forty four snowmobiles. And then they put it in their magazines and then everybody's, oh, look at the beautiful Red Lake. And it was amazing how many people came to follow it here. And we did, Chris Rust was instrumental in all that. And it was amazing boom to the towns winner becoming. And Chris is retired.
Well, you know, the thing too that I go back to on that particular instance was that when, when Matt and, and Chris were bringing people from all of the world.
Literally, yes.
In for the snowmobile, uh, the four manufacturers. The problem that we had is they were on the trail at seven in the morning. They didn't get back till seven at night. We had one restaurant for them to eat in because everybody else closed early. And nobody was open, even selling T-shirts. Chris just was limited because all of the stores were closed and they wanted to buy things. It's a matter of communication, I think, sometimes from that kind of a, of a project of to what's going on in town. We've given up a lot of this.
Making those support teams, um, they got some parking. Who's tonight will be stage first? You guys are foot in the mall. Because in the winter time, the, the economy still is, is hit or miss. So, but if you knew that on Wednesday, you're going to have a hundred dinners. And, uh, and I'll be close on Tuesdays. That's okay. And, but we just we don't take it far.
And the restaurants borrowed the other servers from other restaurants so they could come in and, and accommodate all of these people. It was a community.
Yeah, every, pick any sports car, every sports car has got their, you know, the MG club or the Corvette. They love to show off their vehicles. And they love to do a trail race, right? And typically on the ball. We used to have a deal. They, you can guys, they got mainstream. Come and park your cars and show up and everybody at lunch. A lot of times they spent the night and tourists just come in and say, oh, hey, what's going on? What is this? They'll look and, oh, the kids are tired, let's go get some bikes and and it was free. I mean, literally, it cost us some, a day's worth of parking spaces. And we were good. So.
Like a fat tire bike convention, like we need to do the thing and so.
Races, we had.
I agree with that.
I'm sure.
That, that, that's a big deal.
Didn't anybody go to the Olympics?
No, I was parking.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, they're gonna have a winner carnival again this year. They have the dragon boat races last year and that was fun. Done that. Didn't even know what it was. I got roped into it. It was great. There's a bunch of little things they do.
And, and that's what I'm saying. We've gotten away from the things that made this community like what it was. It's not that.
Well, no.
And that's it.
Well, the community does, so changes in the boss and grows and.
But.
They're just coming back out.
Yeah, that's true.
No, we do a lot of, uh, funding at the chamber and, uh, we are just, uh, having more coordination and input with the chamber. We get, they're a pretty good marketing. Uh, and you know, with our ideas, you know, the, you know, encouraged them to do this and that and the other thing, uh, maybe, uh, targeting.
So it is almost like thirty, um, and we.
I was just gonna say.
It's a Mary Jane thing.
It's not a discussion. It's not at all a discussion. It was just a, hey, by the way, we applied for feasibility study grant. The feasibility study narrowed it down and said, do you want to work on this property or this property? And we said, which one do you think? And they said, well, there's water taps at Mary, so let's just do Mary. That seems easier. So they did a feasibility study, which was just performance, just numbers to see who we should work with and they've done the preliminary grinds of what they've come up with, with numbers of rooms and types of rooms. How much it would cost if we did do anything. Completely very tough.
Completely very top level, nothing since when all it was, was a grant for technical assistance. To have someone do these plans and draw the numbers, and I included them in the packet so you can look at them. So that you're not surprised when we keep talking about it, if we talk about it, if we apply for grants, if we move forward, when we start taking it out. Yeah, and then there's a housing fair on Thursday.
What's a housing fair?
I made it up.
It sounds very festive.
Yeah, so the housing fair is on Thursday, not tomorrow, a week from tomorrow, from three to seven in the community house. Like, no, I'm gonna keep going, I'll keep explaining, let me, let me explain it again. You can ask another. Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
It's in the very last page. Like the last of pages, so those people that design that will be at the housing fair on Thursday. And you can ask them all sorts of questions.
And so this was, this was really requested to Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. And uh, their technical assistance committee did that.
Yeah, they're coming, okay, sorry, to have the technical assistance people are coming, they'll talk to you about all of this, if you have any questions about the details on it. The Mary Drive parcel, what they have done, what they're performing, those people will be here, the art space people that are moving with the art space situation. Diane Butler and Will from Art Space, and I think Scott Moon might be here for the architecture side of it, you have any questions for that? And then the realtor for uh, next to Triangle Park, where Chrysler's buildings are going up to some old sunset building. That realtor will be there, she'll show you pictures and talk about that, and then I've invited uh, a few people like uh, lenders. And other, I noticed that. The Housing Authority, Grand County Housing Authority, and a couple of people who can talk about programs to help people bring the cost down to more reasonable level. Programs, say like first time home buyers or other things like that, so that they can buy Chrysler's buildings. But four of them will go to market if they don't get sold.
Well, that's cool.
So I want people to know that that's gonna be there. So that those are, people are aware, because four of them could go back to market value, two of them are deemed restricted forever. At a lower rate, but four of them can be lower, so I invited people that have programs that I don't know about. Realtors that have programs I don't know about, down payment assistance, buy down percentage stuff. So that people aren't as freaked out by the number that Chrysler proposed when he came to us. And it will mostly be lower. That's the point of the housing fair, that will be great, if you talk to a number of people at the tables. They'll sign up through the machine, each put it in and you get like a boat ride or. Yeah, you got the golf course, the golf simulator thing, you'll get passes from the, from the, whatever. There's a bunch of prizes, right, no, but there will be snacks and refreshments. Uh, if you come, but, but in order to get the rap, you have to talk to. So you have to learn in order, and we're getting people signed up for LURB.
Wow.
So when they come in, they get their name put into the LURB system so that I know that they're interested when stuff comes on the. So we get all of that at once, so.
That's awesome.
Put that together. Say, tell everybody, they're saying, there's the door, put them up if you want to, I tried to give them all the business owners, none of them. Yeah, I was like, I picked the wrong hours, last week I gave out Florida players on the side of town and I only made it to Sagebrush, I was like.
I'll grab one, but I'm going to be at a wedding in Houston um, on Thursday, they're actually getting buried on a.
And they came up with a.
Why?
Uh, I think it's because um.